I'd like to call this meeting of the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order. This is Monday, February 5th, 2024. It's now 7:00 PM. I'd like to record the attendance. It's six of the seven members are here tonight. True. One of them, Chris, is on a business trip and is out of town, so he could not join us here tonight. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the current agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Member Reese?
No, it was Member Engel.
Moved by Member Engel. Any support? Support, Member Nordhook? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Article four, is there any conflict of interest with the issue at heart of this meeting?
No.
None noted. Okay. Matty, are we online? Okay, good. Okay. Article five, approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2024 meeting. Can I have a motion and any comments or changes?
I have a few changes.
Member Bruno?
Article five, approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2023 meeting. Let's go backwards from the end of the paragraph there. Member Bruno also wanted to mention Lancaster, Pennsylvania's ordinances inspired the, then there's a blank addition. So I would propose that we fix that. And I don't know if it's inspired the Farmland Preservation Subcommittee's conclusions in addition to the Grand Township. There's just, that sentence is not a sentence.
The copy I see, it says, "Member Bruno also wanted to mention Lancaster, Pennsylvania's ordinances inspired the 'in' addition to Grand Township."
Inspired the what? There's like a word missing or something.
I would propose we simply take out "inspired the in" and then you wanted to mention those ordinances in addition to Grand Township. Just to simplify it.
Fair enough.
So work.
I like that a lot. And then the next sentence is, "Lastly, wanted to document McKenna approved, was approved to assist the Planning Department." No, I think they're already working with the Planning Department. Was approved to work with the Farmland Preservation Subcommittee.
Yes, that's what was said.
And then moving forward, Article 11. Member Reese said that there's usually a copy of the Bylaws, Code of Conduct, and other documents included in the meeting packet for review. It sounds like it's usually, it's something that, I walk away with inference that's always the meeting packet. I think we should be saying it's usually included in the first meeting packet of the year for review. Like, we don't want that in every meeting packet.
No.
Correct. I was referencing the first. I think you said. Packet of the year. I don't believe you said that.
Probably.
And that is all I have for section five minutes of edits.
I'd make a motion to approve those.
I have one change. Member Engel?
We have a little bit of an ordering typo here. If you look at, there's an Article nine, then it goes down to Article seven.
Oh, yes.
And that really should be Article 10, and then all these should be remembered to be consistent.
Well, but didn't we change the order of the agenda that night?
We did.
We did.
Article seven, and we did it at the end, so I think it stayed.
We had a little situation there, I think where the order might have been changed.
You were right.
After we approved.
And we did have an emotion to change the agenda.
Exactly.
You're absolutely right, so I think we're good with that.
I think the minutes are reflective of what happened.
Even more so than we were credit, because if you look right before Article eight, it says, "Chair dorate moved Article seven." She captures that.
I like that. Very, very good sex, I see that.
Perfect.
Okay.
I withdraw my.
Motion by Member Reese to approve, seconded by Member Engel.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six yeses. Zero opposition. Okay, next item. And by the way, I'd like to thank the folks that write up the meeting minutes. I think it's, you do a great job.
You mean, it's not Joe?
Oh, well, he checks them to make sure they're correct, right? And I say that as Recording Secretary for the Subcommittee.
Right. You could certainly, yeah.
Yeah. So, Article six, like to now acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. The comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience? None seen. Anybody online? Matty? Okay. Like to now move on to Article seven, Ordinance Amendment for Chapter 23. Madison?
So the hearing that was originally scheduled for tonight was not properly publicly noticed. So in order to follow due process, we need to reschedule for our next meeting. So we just need a motion to schedule the public hearing for the 26th.
Okay, can we have a motion to that effect?
Can we have some discussion first?
Yes, definitely.
May I go first?
You can. You may. Member Bruno?
All right. So, I believe I made the motion last time to have the public hearing today. And I made that based on some recommendations from Timmy here, that, you know, why wait? We can do some stuff in parallel, and I thought that was a good idea. We also had the ripcord of, you know, exiting if we didn't want to move it up to the board. So we could have the hearing and still hold our motion to the Board. Having experienced the month since then, and the lack of parallel progress, I'm not as convinced that we can accomplish things in parallel between now and February 26th, especially after having reviewed the six documents that were forwarded to me from Michael Homier. So, I don't know how far I should go into my observations of what I was sent, because it also ties into Article. To me, Article seven and eight is a blurry line, and I don't want to overstep, so I will stop talking there and let someone else comment.
Member Reese?
I'm regretting, I initially was going to recommend that we reorganize the agenda to approach this after the conversation, because I feel that the one should be ahead of the other. I don't like setting a hearing for something when we don't have anything prepared for people to review. I mean, typically, if there's a hearing, there's an application and a plan, and that's what we're discussing, but I don't feel that we're quite there yet. Now, it could be very, very soon, but we thought that before and we fell short of the line. So I kind of concur with you that setting the date that soon may be inappropriate.
So, further blurring the line, in the bylaws, I looked at some adjacent communities and what their bylaws look like. They actually usually, in their bylaws, have a opportunity where you could have, you could make a motion to go back and revisit our approval or adoption of today's agenda. We should make sure we have it in our bylaws, because they have a means to fix, to unring the bell per se.
Other discussion, Member Engel?
Madison?
Yes.
While I know that the Planning Commission all received, I think, a copy of the email from Mike Homier with the proposed Chapter 23 revision in it, was that actually in the last packet?
It hasn't been in a packet, because it hasn't been an agenda item yet. All we've scheduled is the public hearing.
So, it isn't in tonight's packet, right? At least not the packet. The actual ordinance amendment is not in tonight's packet?
No, because we're scheduling a hearing for that agenda item.
So if somebody wanted to comment on whether or not it was appropriate to schedule this for a public hearing, they would not have anything to review or consider in terms of bringing forth their perspective prior to the public hearing, correct?
So, I see what you're saying, but typically, an application comes in and we schedule the public hearing based on the application itself, not the, we don't wait for you to see an application and then schedule a public hearing and then have it come back. We schedule it all for the same time. So because the township has triggered the application of sorts for an amendment to the ordinance, we're setting a public hearing to discuss that agenda item during the public, or following the public hearing.
Member Reese?
Did you? I was not finished. So, we are being asked to schedule a public hearing in a document that we have not officially received yet.
You have received it. The Planning Commission was sent it by legal counsel via the Planning Department.
It's not a public document yet.
Right, but it was, okay, it was sent from an attorney to our about-to-be-new-chair, and then he distributed it. Is that how we got it?
Yes.
Yeah, it went through Chris and then to me, and then I sent it out.
Okay, yes.
And as I understand it, this amendment simply strips the Planning Commission from Chapter 23.
Yeah, I believe Mike Homier went through what the whole process would be, in that we're amending the zoning ordinance to bring the Planning Commission procedures out of the zoning ordinance and into its own standalone, which is why you guys are now reviewing the bylaws alongside. So that's why the bylaws are on your agenda tonight, so that you guys are getting your plan in place at the same time of this public hearing.
Got it.
Member Reese?
Generally, when we set a public hearing for something, you have an application on your desk from an applicant that a person in the general public could come in and ask you questions about, right?
Yes.
So do you feel comfortable that if we schedule a public hearing and somebody from the public comes in to ask questions, that you have the necessary information to?
Yes. I mean, this is unique in that it's not about an actual parcel or some sort of land. It's simply about procedures. So it's, I'm able to explain to the public what is being presented at the public hearing, and it will be on the agenda packet for the public hearing, so it will be available to the public in the same fashion that other information is available prior to a public hearing.
Just generally, those packets don't come out till the Thursday or Friday before the meeting, and the public notice, I think, for the public hearing comes out.
At least 15 days.
Exactly. So it seems like we should, I guess I feel like we should have the information ready.
Yes.
For that 15 days.
And we have the information, yes, yes.
Member Bruno?
I'm not sure how to most succinctly summarize my thoughts here, but I'm gonna, I guess, revert to Article six and try to limit myself to five minutes. I'm not sure. I have my head wrapped around it, so I'm not sure how, I wouldn't. I'm glad you could explain it to the public, because I asked a former chair of this commission, and I asked a trustee some questions this morning, and I didn't get a very good answer, so I'm gonna ask it of my peers, and then maybe zoning administrator and new planning director. But as a seasoned planning commissioner, not gonna say that three-letter word that starts with an N, but still one of the most junior on the Board, I believe, and I'm looking maybe to show of hands or something, I think I'm allowed to do this. Ninety percent of our meetings, we address a special use permit that's specified in the zoning ordinance, or we look at site plan reviews of the sort regarding the PUD, which is from the zoning ordinance. On occasion, we have matters like this, amending chapters and bylaws and procedures. But the bulk, I went back and looked at Madison's year-end summary report, the bulk of what we do is processes and procedures from the zoning ordinance. Does that seem fair? And is my assessment correct?
Plan reviews of some sort.
Okay. Being the junior, but seasoned, so, because I know what we've been doing, it always struck me as odd, and I never really questioned it, because I just followed the pattern. I'm here, I'm kind of a guest. You guys have all been here for a long time, and I'm just following the pattern. But what's interesting is we have a zoning ordinance, a planning commission, and a zoning board of appeals. So when I was tapped on the shoulder and said, "Would you be willing to be on the Planning Commission?", I'm trying to understand the lay of the land, and I thought, maybe like the judicial system, you go to the Supreme Court, so you can appeal something, but it has to go through a court first. So I was like, why isn't there like a zoning board? There's a zoning board of appeals, not a zoning board. So I kind of justified it to myself, well, the zoning ordinance is the policy, and you can appeal the policy, so that's why there's a zoning board of appeals. So I kind of answered that, and I don't know if that's correct, that's my self-justification. But then I was really confused, as a Planning Commission member, that my book of knowledge, I do project management for a living, or if you're an engineer, you know, it might be an engineering book, whatever your handbook is. Our handbook is a zoning handbook, but we're a planning commission. So where I'm going with this is, for some reason, we look at, when this says, you know, you can make an accessory building bigger than 132 square feet if you get a special use permit, they come to the Planning Commission. My question is, what statute or what ordinance gives us that power? Currently. And if we go ahead and amend Chapter 23, are we, as my father would say, throwing the baby out with the bathwater? Because I read four times today the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, and I see nowhere in there where it says I can make a decision on whether accessory buildings should be larger or smaller than 132 square feet. I see nowhere in there where it says I can make any determination in regard to a zoning ordinance, and I wonder where that's gonna fall. Can anyone answer that question for me? And I'll, I gave you my long story as to how I arrived there, because I think it's important. What gives us that authority now? And does that authority remain if we are continued as a commission under a new act of the state of Michigan, specifically the MPEA 2008 Amendment 33?
Throw up. Addison, any thoughts on that?
I mean, I can't address those questions. We have Leslie, who's available to answer.
Okay.
Is that? Mr. Chair, though, is we, are we jumping out of sequence here? I don't think so, because my question is, we're scheduling, I could be. My justification, and the chair could shoot me down. Can we schedule a public hearing to make a change when at least one member has no clue what the change is really accomplishing? And I may be alone in that, but I didn't see much of anything go up here that's.
Perhaps I can address some of these questions. This is Leslie Abdu. Sorry to interrupt, Ryan. Go ahead.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, so the, what you, what might be a little bit confusing is that the planning, so there's the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act. The Planning Enabling Act governs the creation and powers of a planning commission. The Zoning Enabling Act gives townships the authority to zone. Now, both the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act frequently use the terms zoning board or zoning commission. That is the planning commission. They mean the same thing. They're just used co-terminously throughout both statutes. So for all intents and purposes, the planning commission is the planning board, or the zoning board, or the zoning commission, depending on which section of the statute that you're looking at. So those two statutes read together, and they were recodified back in 2006 and 2008. The statutes used to be, there was one zoning, there was multiple zoning laws that governed different types of municipalities. So there was a Township Zoning Act, there was a Home Rule City Zoning Act. So each municipality was governed under different statutes. And what the Zoning Enabling Act did was it recodified them so that they are all, all municipalities are governed under the same act, so that you don't have to look to different statutes to determine what the rules are. The Planning Enabling Act then came along in 2008, after the recodification in the zoning enabling act, and basically provided for all municipalities to create, organize, and provide the powers and duties of local planning commissions. Part of the planning commission's role and responsibility, as dictated in the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act, is to consider amendments and drafting of both master plans as well as zoning ordinances.
Can I interrupt you there?
Sure, go ahead.
So that was exactly the answer I was expecting from my research today, and that last part, I think, is the key. The, so I'm going to walk with two keys. So if they're synonymous, I think we should have a definition of that. I think we should somewhere say, you know, plan, you know, have a definition in our bylaws. But in reading the police power ordinance, it only references the Planning Enabling Act, not the Zoning Enabling Act. The Planning Enabling Act does not mention that we can do any zoning ordinances. The Zoning Enabling Act, so I think how at least Grand Rapids addressed that, if you look at their ordinance, it references both the Zoning and Enabling Act and the Planning and Enabling Act in the formation of the Planning Commission. Should we have a reference to the zoning act? Because I don't see how we.
Ours. What's in the original?
Ours does.
Reese?
Chapter, Chapter 2302, one, the very last sentence, said, "The Planning Commission is hereby established in accordance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and the Michigan Planning Enabling Act to undertake all planning and zoning activities within Cascade Charter Township."
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct. My question is, is should we have a reference to the zoning act somewhere in either the police power or the bylaws? Because I don't see where that transfer is over.
I certainly don't disagree with that. Do I think legally it's necessary? No, because I think that the township has that authority irrespective of whether or not that statute is specifically listed in the ordinance itself. That said, I certainly don't have any concerns or problems with adding it, just to dot our i's and cross our t's. And I would recommend it be, if we're gonna, if we're gonna choose which of the two, which of the two documents it's going to be in, my preference would be that it would be in the police power ordinance. The bylaws are created because of the requirement in the Planning Enabling Act that requires the Planning Commission to adopt bylaws. So, in my opinion, the bylaws are more consistent with the requirements of the Planning Enabling Act rather than the Zoning Enabling Act. That said, I don't think having a reference in both or one or the other is certainly a problem. I think it's more of a formality than an issue from a legal standpoint.
Awesome. I agree with you. I think it would be great to have it in the police power. I agree. I agree with everything you just said. And again, I'm making a lot of inferences here. So then my next question in this same vein is, Article three of the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act says, "A planning commission shall," it doesn't say "may", "make and approve a," oh, no, sorry, wrong, wrong, wrong red part. Scratch that for a second there. Sorry about that. I gotta find it here. My text. I'll summarize it. I won't say it directly. But again, back to the stripping of Chapter 23 and the circularness of some of this. The police power ordinance basically states the number of members, and that we're meeting on the first and third Mondays of every month. The Michigan Planning and Enabling Act basically says, again, roughly summarized, "The planning commission shall set the frequency, number of meetings, time and place of meetings." And there's another section that says, "The township ordinance can be greater than what's proposed in the Michigan Planning Enable Act, as long as it doesn't conflict with anything in here." And we have an obvious conflict. So again, are we gonna specify that in the bylaws? Or in the Police Power Act? Right now, it's in both, and I don't think we can have it in both. And it sounds like by statute, it has to be in the bylaws, because it says, "The planning commission shall set all of that." And then the next question becomes, is that the intent? Is that gonna make Board of Trustees member happy that we're setting our frequency? And what if we set that to four? We go to the minimum. We're happy meeting four times a year.
One of the reasons a lot of times the Board sets the the frequency of the meetings in some townships and other municipalities is because of cost concerns. Obviously, planning commissioners are typically paid, you know, in some instances on a per-meeting basis. So obviously, the Township Board has the ultimate authority over, you know, expenditures associated with the township. So in some townships that are cost-conscious, they will, the Township Board sets the meeting frequency, or a minimum meeting frequency, or a maximum meeting frequency with which the Planning Commission can then petition to the Township Board if they need an additional special meeting on top of what is already authorized by the Township Board. So oftentimes, what's appropriate is to have the police power ordinance specify either a maximum or a minimum, and then the bylaws go into a little bit more detail when it comes to the dates of the meetings, and then the ability of the Planning Commission to request additional meetings if it's necessary, or cancel meetings, as long as they are following the requirements in the Planning Enabling Act that the meetings be, or that the Planning Commission be met at least quarterly. So, obviously, a lot of requirements, it's, it's in some ways better to have them in the bylaws, because it's easier to change your bylaws than it is to change an ordinance, certainly in zoning ordinance, but also a police power ordinance. So, certain things that we anticipate may change from time to time, such as a meeting schedule. Having it in the bylaws is a little bit easier, just from a, you know, a mandatory standpoint. But I, you know, I think it's going to ultimately be whether or not the Board has any concerns with the number of meetings that the Planning Commission is having.
Perfect. That all sounds good and makes sense, and I think, I think I followed most of it. But my takeaway is that what I think I heard from you, you believe it should be min and max, like the bounding box, should be probably in the, in the police power, and the details are in the bylaws, and right now the entire lump sum is in both, and it really can't be in both. So I guess the point I'm making is there's a lot of confusion from what I can see, and a lot of circular references, and a lot of, I'm gonna go with such a word, there's triplicate redundancy is what I'm calling it. So I, I have, if it's not obvious, I have grave concerns over scheduling an ordinance, scheduling a public hearing for something that I don't think we have a firm grasp of.
Member Reese?
This is a tricky one, because we're being asked to schedule the public hearing.
Reschedule.
Re, okay. We're being asked to, thank you, thank you. We're being asked to reschedule the public hearing. But the ordinance that's being discussed is really not one that we're creating.
I've had any input on.
Or had any input on. So it makes it, so we're, we're kind of, we're kind of stuck, you know, between two, between two spots. I also have some concerns, and an example of that is, I think that the schedule part of that is way too specific. I think if somebody, I could think of a former Planning Commission member, if he was here, he would probably argue this too, that, this example, that it's very specific in the sense that it says we have to meet the first and the third unless it's a legal holiday. There's at least two or three times a year where this meeting is rescheduled because of something other than a legal holiday. Spring break, election days, you know, there's, there's, what, four school election opportunities throughout the year. So there's, there's lots of, there needs to be, yeah, that's a legal holiday, though, but there's, there certainly needs to be more flexibility in the wording just for that one. So I feel like more time needs to be put into this ordinance before we are ready for public hearing. That's just my, because I don't think we're at the, close to the final draft.
Member Nordhook?
I think you guys are eating way too much into this. This is simply rescheduling a public hearing that we've already done. You want the attorney to get involved and rewrite all this for you, that's fine, but we schedule the public hearing because we need that timeframe. This will be available before the meeting. So don't, I mean, you guys want to rewrite the zoning act, you want to rewrite the planning enabling act, you want, this is ridiculous.
I don't want to rewrite any acts. I don't wanna rewrite any acts.
Member Bruno. I I I would be.
Finished yet.
Oh, sorry.
So this is ridiculous. You guys are reading this way farther than it needs to be. Simply schedule the public hearing. Get ahold of our attorney, have him rewrite all these ordinances, including the statute, the state, maybe make you guys happy. But you're over, you're over the top. Schedule the public hearing for the zoning. I'll make the motion. And then we'll do a nice little vote. A roll call vote. Put you all on record, because you guys are up to something other than scheduling a public hearing.
We already scheduled it once, though, we weren't prepared. You don't wanna do that a second time, it's kind of embarrassing.
Nothing different than last time.
Are you done? I respectfully disagree. Last time I was told that this is all drafted and it's 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 done. I I I, someone opened the kimono and I saw what's drafted. And it's not a system. This concept of, well, it's just this and it's not this, but it's not that. It's a systems love, I'm a systems engineer. You can't have six documents that all conflict.
Well, then tell your attorney he's got a problem.
Michael Homier, you have a problem.
There you go.
I've said it on the record. I I don't know how to express that. I can go on and on, I could spend hours if you wanted to go through all the things. But I just think we need to take a timeout and get everything lined up. How do we have so many things that conflict?
What were they last time when we scheduled the public hearing?
Um, buried somewhere, I think, in the township. That's, it looked like the email came out on December sixteenth, it was sent to us on January twenty-second. I don't know why it wasn't presented then. I've now seen it and I don't, I'm not convinced it's all done and ready in prime time. I might be alone. But I'm looking at this thing, it's just right now with Leslie, she said there's a couple of things that could be improved. I don't get.
You're not reviewing, you're not reviewing the ordinance right now.
We're not.
That's not what the agenda item is.
Correct, the agenda item is to.
Reschedule.
Can Leslie address?
It's to go, the the agenda item is to go public, in my mind, and I don't think we're ready for public.
I I would agree.
I agree.
We did already schedule it, and I'm gonna just say one last thing, I'm gonna shut up on this topic because I'm getting into Article eight. We did schedule it with, yes, I made the motion to to have it today, and I regret doing that, and I'm not gonna be the one to make the motion again, and I will vote against a motion, I guess is the best way to summarize it.
Any further discussion?
I I have a question, comment and a question. Um, with all due respect to Ryan, I don't see this as a major issue in terms of working through some of the some of the areas that you are concerned about. I I just don't see that as a big issue. I think it can be done. My concern is a downstream concern, and Leslie, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Um, if we schedule this for public hearing and this gets approved, obviously, there will be followed by a uh police powers amendment, correct? To, and I put this in quotes, "to reestablish the planning commission," correct?
Yes, I mean, the whole, the whole point, and I I apologize, I'm coming in a little bit late to this. I've been on maternity leave and just got back. So I was not part of the drafting of these documents. But my understanding is is that the zoning ordinance amendment that you are considering to set a public hearing for tonight is simply um to make changes to the existing zoning ordinance that would be in conflict with or inconsistent with the new police power ordinance. Typically, police power, planning commissions are established by police power ordinance, not by zoning ordinance. And so we're trying to um make the two, uh, adopt the two contemporaneously so that they are consistent. Um, now, my comments prior with respect to the zoning enabling act not necessarily being explicitly mentioned in this zoning amendment is not, I don't think, I wouldn't say it's like a a problem to the ordinance itself. Um, but if if the Planning Commission has concerns with respect to inconsistencies between the police power ordinance, the zoning ordinance amendments and the bylaws, and that's certainly something we need to look at. Oftentimes, these three documents cross-reference one another for that very purpose, to avoid any inconsistencies. Um, or say, you know, uh, the Planning Commission will a- address this issue in its bylaws or, um, you know, it, one document will be more general and the other will be more specific with respect to things like meeting dates, um, you know, a frequency of meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So if there are direct conflicts, that's something we should certainly look at. Um, but at this point, really, what we're doing is scheduling the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment um so that we can move forward and then consider the uh bylaw amendments and then the uh police power ordinance right around the same time. Because we don't want one to go in effect before the other, obviously. Uh, you know, that that was what I was gonna say with respect to the bylaws being on the agenda tonight. I wouldn't recommend that the Planning Commission take any action on those um tonight, given the fact that we still don't have the police power ordinance or zoning ordinance amendments in effect. Those should all be done at the same time.
Well, if if we all agreed hypothetically on what the bylaws should say, we could approve those contingent on the Amendment of twenty-three and the implementation of the of the uh police power ordinance, correct?
Yes, the only reason I would potentially hesitate on adopting them right now, though, is because, um, you know, if you adopt them contingent on the uh the approval and adoption of the zoning ordinance amendments and the police power ordinance, then, you know, it kinda almost in some ways nullifies the public hearing on the zoning amendments because it's like, it seems like it's already a done deal, right? So I would rather hold off on approving the bylaws until after the Planning Commission makes a recommendation on the zoning ordinance amendments, and then the board ultimately adopts the um, the police power and zoning ordinance amendments. Otherwise, we might have to go back to the bylaws anyway if there are any subsequent changes that are inconsistent with the bylaws. Typically, the bylaws would happen after um the adoption of the ordinances or at least contemporaneously from a process standpoint.
Okay, two two follow-up questions, and we don't need a public hearing to either adopt or amend our bylaws, do we?
Correct, no.
Yeah, that's just, that's an internal process that we engage in. So that really, what we do or don't do in that respect tonight doesn't impact technically the either the public hearing or the adoption of the um, the police power ordinance, correct?
Well, it 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 could, to the extent that there's portions of the bylaws that are proposed to be amended that are directly um related to or dependent upon draft changes to the zoning ordinance or the police power ordinance. So if you adopt those bylaws and then there are subsequent changes to those two ordinances that then render the changes to the bylaws um null or inconsistent, then you'd have to go back and change the bylaws anyway. So to, in my opinion, it makes sense to hold off on those until we have final versions of the two ordinances. Um, I know that's not, obviously, you know, we wanna address things as quickly as we can, but um, you know, I, that's to avoid having to come back and redo it anyway, especially given if there's questions between, you know, conflicts between those three documents.
So two more.
Are you done?
Not, um, two more questions here. Um, we as a planning commission have no say in what the police power ordinance contains other than that of private citizens, correct?
Correct.
So we are bystanders in terms of what the the Board of Trustees decides to adopt in terms of what our powers look like. Um, once that uh amendment or that ordinance is put on the table and voted on, correct?
Correct, with that said, obviously, the police power ordinance adopted by the board cannot conflict with the powers that are delegated to the Planning Commission by statute. Um, obviously, as I think Member Bruno mentioned, they can go above and beyond what is already delegated to the Planning Commission by statute. But the the board could not, um, you know, adopt something in the Planning Commission that directly conflicts with the Planning Enabling Act or the zoning enabling act. Um, you know, for example, they couldn't say, "The board adopts the Planning Commission's bylaws without any input of the Planning Commission," you know, because the statute says that the Planning Commission has um the ability to adopt its bylaws, although the board could ask for, you know, a review of those. Um, or, you know, the the board couldn't say in the planning and the in the police power ordinance, "Well, you can only meet twice a year because statute dictates you must meet at least quarterly." So there's certain um limitations, obviously, by statute, but you're right. To the extent that the board has the ultimate authority over adopting the police power ordinance, giving the Planning Commission, creating the Planning Commission and delegating its authority, uh, you as planning commissioners don't make a recommendation or hold a public hearing on that.
Yeah, if three A and three B, uh, is there anything in the state statutes that precludes us from having a nine-member planning commission?
No, but the board sets the size of the planning commission in its police power ordinance.
Understood, uh, is there anything in state law that would prevent us or prevent the board from uh providing an option of a seven or a nine-member um planning commission? Or do they have to be specific as to one or the other?
Typically, it's specific, um, because then you don't, I mean, otherwise, then it's a question of, well, if the members, there's only seven members at a given time, then do we, do we have two vacancies? You know, usually that is specified a specific number um in the ordinance. I've never seen a planning commission ordinance that has an an option for um multiple different composition sizes of a planning commission.
I guess my my question is, is you did, is there any in the state statute that would preclude the the board from giving itself the option of having or the the planning commission of having the option of seven or nine members, depending on on the needs, the growth of the community, those sorts of things? Or do we always have to go back and amend this, the ordinance?
I I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit them from doing so, but again, I've never seen that um done before. Usually, the ordinance um will specify the the number.
Is it?
And then they go back and can amend it if it's um, i- if they are going to change the composition size.
Last question, Scout Sonner. Is it your law firm's recommendation that we reduce the number of planning commission members in this community from nine to seven?
I do not take, that is a political policy decision. I don't take any position on that, if if that's up to the township board.
Yeah, fair enough, thank you.
Member Bruno.
So 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 thank you for your very deliberate and um carefully worded answers. Um, I I like to think I not only agreed with ninety percent of them, I think at or near that percentage was kind of what I said, but more eloquently and more legally correct. Um, in in regards to Member Engle's question of, do we have any impact on the police power ordinance? We don't, but impacts us, I believe. It's an input, I would think, to our bylaws. It it, if we don't know what that looks like, then I don't think we know exactly how I wanna script a bylaw. Uh, I think that there there should be a synergy between them. Um, I think they should, they should interlock like a puzzle, and they should make sure that in a Venn diagram, there's hopefully very little overlap other than referencing one to another. They certainly shouldn't have a blatant conflicts or redundancies. If the police power ordinance sets the number and we set a different number in our bylaws, I think we not only look silly, we we have a problem. And I think that's why I spoke up, and I think it's, I think what she, I heard from her is that they should be constructed and reviewed from a holistic systemic viewpoint. Otherwise, if we create them in silos, we're gonna get something that doesn't work.
Or match.
Or match, yes.
Member Nord.
And just for the record, the statute says five to nine members.
Or more specifically, five, seven, or nine, it must be odd.
It says five to nine.
But the police powers ordinance is specific at seven.
State of Michigan statute, plant the planning commission between five and nine. So be happy you're going to seven.
I have a question for Leslie. If uh if we do schedule this public hearing for February twenty-six, uh, and nobody shows up, what do we talk about?
Well, you can, you can still hold the public hearing. Um, like Madison mentioned, um, it is a requirement that when that notice of public hearing gets published and posted, that a copy of the draft amendments be available um at a minimum at township hall, although I do believe that it is common for those amendments to be available online for review. So to the extent that there's any concern that the proposed amendments would not be available to the public, I think is um alleviated, given the notice and the fact that the draft will be available at least at a minimum um by the date that the notice is published and posted. That said, if nobody attends the meeting, you know, the Planning Commission obviously could treat it just like any other planning commission public hearing on a zoning amendment. Um, either, uh, you know, discuss, make a decision and make a recommendation to the board or table it and uh schedule another public hearing. But um, you know, that that's obviously up to the Planning Commission uh when and when and if that public hearing uh occurs. But it's uh, you know, it's more of a uh formality at this point to schedule the public hearing. But if, you know, I'm not sure if there's other issues or concerns with the substance of the ordinance that we need to address. But um, you know, uh, we're kinda looking at the zoning ordinance amendments right now in a in a funnel, I suppose. But, you know, it would be most appropriate for those to be considered at the same time as the bylaws.
If if we have that public hearing on February twenty-six and we open it up and close it down after thirty minutes or so, can we discuss as uh planning commission members the pros and cons or any changes we would like to see uh in those uh proposed amendments?
Absolutely, it's like any other zoning ordinance amendment, uh rezoning or a text amendment. The book, the Planning Commission can make a recommendation to the board with or without amendments to the draft. Um, and then the board has the ultimate authority over uh whether it gets adopted or not or if it gets sent back to the Planning Commission for additional review.
And that would include the bylaws, if we discuss that at the same time?
Yes, I, again, I would recommend that the bylaws be done at the same time as both um the zoning ordinance amendments as well as the police power ordinance. Because the the board has the authority over the adoption of both ordinances, it might make the most sense for the, for the Planning Commission to hold off on adopting the bylaw, bylaw changes until after those two ordinances are adopted by the board. Um, but that's obviously up to the of the, up to the Planning Commission. It just from a procedural standpoint, like I said before, makes a little bit more sense so that you don't have to go back and change any provisions of the bylaws that may become in conflict with the ordinances if the planning or the township board adopts changes to those um that are different from what uh the Planning Commission ultimately recommended.
Thank you, Member Engel.
Leslie, but but we do wanna get a a workable draft before that point in time.
Sure, absolutely.
Work through these things, get the issues ironed out and and maybe not vote on it necessarily, but have it ready to go.
Absolutely, I don't see a problem with discussing the bylaws tonight. My my only um comment was perhaps wait on officially adopting them until after those ordinances are um are completed.
Member Bruno. I I I guess I'm just baffled, and I don't know whether to address this to you or or the trustee to my right. Um, I feel like there's there's some animosity and some 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 consternation over this. And and I guess I'm just a perfectionist and I don't understand the the I don't understand it. I I I guess, why would we not wanna do it once and do it right? Is is there a fire that I'm not aware of? Is is there any reason, is there any harm or foul created if we punted for a month? We said, "By February twenty-sixth, we want to have a synergistic set of stripping amendment," or I guess a new chapter twenty-three, so a new ordinance, um, a new police power ordinance and some bylaws that all work well together, that we're all happy with. And then, you know, the dates aren't correct, but then March twenty-sixth, we have the public hearing and we have all of our ducks in a row. We look like competent public servants who have done our homework and are ready. What does that? Are we in trouble with the state of Michigan? Are we gonna get our township charter pulled? Does the snowman melt out front? What happens? Why, why the fire, why the urgency?
What's the harm in delay?
What's, well, I I, I, that's that's the meaning, but I'd like to freephrase it. What's the harm in taking our time and doing it right?
Is this to me?
Yeah, maybe to you. Yeah, maybe to you, maybe you know, maybe you can say you don't know, maybe it's back to the politics. I, I, I'm talking to anybody who can say.
From a legal standpoint, it's entirely up to the planning commission when you want to schedule it. From a, from a legal standpoint, my only concern is to ensure that the three documents don't have inconsistencies, um, and to make sure that they're adopted in the proper order, such that it doesn't render one, um, you know, to not, not making sense if another one is subsequently adopted, that renders it void. So, you know, whether or not, whatever the, the timeframe that the township wants to consider these in, that's really up to the planning commission and the board. I, I can't speak to, um, when, you know, what the, what any sense of urgency or not urgency there may be.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I agree. I, I term it OBE obsolete by events. If, if we do this in the wrong order, we're going to obsolete something we spent time on. It wasn't even needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Bruno. Member Reese.
I was just going to say, this, this was, this is very interesting. We have spent so much time talking about bylaws, uh, that I think I could have walked to the Mackinac Bridge and maybe back. We started talking about this in July of 2021, and we agreed to a set of bylaws in March of 2023 that would have worked great. They didn't conflict. We had the blessing from the township board and the blessing from legal counsel to move forward with those. And, uh, if we'd just done that, we would have, we would have avoided all of this, potentially.
Member Engel.
Said to fend them in it. Spent hours up here talking about this, for years.
Member Engel.
I would like to see the bylaws out of chapter 23. I, I don't think it's as hard to fix as some up here might suggest it is. I also think with severability, correct me here if I'm wrong on this, Leslie, that if there is an inconsistency between the two, uh, the ordinance wins. And we don't have to even have to worry about it. But it would be a lot cleaner if we've got police power, our bylaws, they don't conflict, we go happily on our way. I guess the, the question, and this isn't for Leslie, this is for Timmy or the board, is, um, I wrote down your comment, be happy you're going to get seven. Um, the, the 900-pound gorilla in the room is, why does, why do at least some people, and I don't know who it is, believe that this township would be better served by a smaller planning commission, rather than a nine-member planning commission, which has worked well for quite a while, in a township that has the largest population in the county? This is the only township that has an international airport, as far as I know, uh, almost entirely within its boundaries. It has a very complex commercial area going down 28th Street. And at least from my perspective, even before I came on this commission, the planning commission was doing a pretty darn good job of sorting through these very complicated factors. And as the township continues to grow, and now to take that tool down from nine to seven, doesn't make sense to me as a planning commissioner. And I would love to know, either from you or from our township manager, to Ryan's point, A, what the hurry is on that, the change, and why we're doing it. And maybe you can't answer that question, I don't know. But that's sort of the, that, again, that gorilla in the room that I'd like to get addressed.
Well, right now, we have one member missing, and we have three members up for reappointment.
Two members missing.
At expired terms. This would be a time of convenience to take it from nine to seven.
That doesn't answer the question, but Timmy.
It's a convenience thing. There's, you heard your own attorney sit here two meetings ago and tell you that he represents approximately 100 communities, and there's only a little bit, have nine members, they all have seven or less.
So what does that mean? I mean, I mean, we, we have, we have a very unique.
Seven members on the board, how can we possibly manage?
That doesn't answer the question. That changes, that changes the subject.
Possibly do it with seven members on the board, all that same stuff you just brought up. Are you saying that we're incompetent, we have to have none?
I'm not saying that anybody's incompetent. I think.
Well, then why do we need none?
They're in separate silos, though.
You, you got.
Planning commission in the board.
How can one silo work and the other silo can't, that same number?
Is, is, so that's the answer, the board seven, so you guys should be able to do it with seven? I just want to under, I just want to understand.
So, this is ridiculous.
Can, the, the question was asked about if, doing it right, if we need to slow down to do it right, was what Member Bruno asked. And I would just, um, wondering if Leslie could speak to, would scheduling the public hearing for the 26th prevent us from handling this appropriately or, um, accurately?
No, the only thing I would say is, is that obviously, like I mentioned, we need to have a draft of the amendments available to the public when we, um, have the notice published and posted. So, that said, that doesn't mean we can't make changes to that draft later, um, or discuss any potential changes during the public hearing or after the public hearing. Um, but we, you know, there needs to be something available for the public to review. So, no, I, I don't, I don't have any concerns with moving forward, um, on the 26th, but it's obviously up to the planning commission when you want to schedule the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Nordhuck, at the last meeting, I thought you had said that the manager wanted us to go to seven, but it sounded like you just said that it was legal counsel that wants us to go to seven.
He was here and explained things very clearly to everybody on this commission. Grace is looking at seven, manager's looking at seven. I think seven would be appropriate myself. I don't think we need more planning commissioners than we have board members.
Even with the stalemate that we've had lately, of course, I guess that was because more of an even number as opposed.
The biggest stalemate we have here is you guys don't want to go to seven. You want the police powers, and the state gives that to the board.
I, I'm not debating that.
Well, then why are we having?
The, the state does give that to the, to the board. I agree.
I mean, if you guys don't want to go down, you don't want to post a public hearing, repost a public hearing, reschedule it.
I just want to take our time. I feel like we're in a rush, and when people rush, things get messed.
Legal counsel just indicated it wouldn't.
How many months do you want to go? You want to spend 12 months on the bylaws? Like he wants to do before we schedule this public hearing?
I'd like to make sure that we follow all the policies correctly and nothing gets missed.
The first policy you got to follow is schedule a public hearing.
Legal counsel indicated we would not be, um, interrupting the process or doing the process incorrectly if we were to schedule the public hearing. Only reason the public hearing wasn't scheduled for today is because your staff, I incorrectly noticed it. So, if you want to take that into consideration.
Member Bruno.
I feel like I'm in the middle here somehow, and I, I feel like I'm being by one party lumped with the other, and the other party lumped with the other ironically. But I, I guess for the record, my understanding that police power ordinance and the setting of the number as in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, as verified by Leslie, is at the will and power of the Board of Trustees. So, whether I care or not the number, it's not in my purview. So I don't know why we're spending any effort on that, to be quite blunt. But whatever the number is, I want it specified in the right document and not in every document. And I think my point is, I think we're, I think we're in the sidelines worrying about the number, when I don't care if it's 44, but I guess that would be invalid because it's supposed to be five, seven, or nine, not between five and nine.
Yeah, it is five, seven, nine.
Whatever it is, it should be specified in one spot and one spot only. Because I have seen endless documents in this township that say one thing in one spot, and another thing in another spot, and another thing in another spot, and they all conflict, or as Leslie said, yeah, conflict is the word, I say they're inconsistent.
They are, and the problem.
Be consistent.
Right.
And, and I think you're sensing that I'm on the side of a certain number. I don't care what the number is, for the record.
All I know is that there's a lot of opposition to set in a public hearing because.
Because what we have in front of us, if I may be blunt, is garbage.
I asked Michael Homier to review our bylaws, and I believe he sent it to a junior lawyer, because I read it, and it's terrible. I don't mean to offend this gentleman, but it has circular. It has references in one spot to meeting minutes shall be done by the recording secretary, who's the planning director. We don't have a planning director anymore. In another spot, it should be done.
No.
Nope, that's not her title. So we.
Are you joking?
We have.
That is, she's the planning director.
What was, what is her formal title? That was not what was sent out by, by Jade unless he wrote it incorrectly.
He filled Brian's previous, she is filling Brian's position.
Okay. If you just go through this, I can send this to somebody, but I want to make it clear to Timmy that it's not a stall tactic. It is a documentation tactic. And if you want to sit down outside of here and review it, I'll be more than happy to show you.
Well, I want you to sit down with the attorney.
I will very gladly do so.
And you sit down with the attorney.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other discussion? I'd like to have a vote on Article 7 ordinance amendment for chapter 23, just.
You have to have a motion or to have a vote.
You have to have a motion.
And we haven't had a motion yet.
And we have a motion.
So I'll make the motion that we schedule a public hearing for February 26th for a zoning ordinance amendment of chapter 23.
Is that their next meeting, the 26th? That would be, wouldn't it?
It's three weeks.
That actually meets the law that we have that timeframe.
And that gives you time to post it.
And that gives her time to post it.
And get the information out publicly so people can read it in advance.
I can put it up this week.
Okay.
So you have a motion.
Got a motion, do I?
I would like a roll call on this for the vote.
Okay.
Discussion?
Uh, do I hear support?
Well, you have discussion.
Discussion. And Member Engel.
Ryan, are you going to sit down with the attorney and walk through your concerns about the bylaws with him? I'm willing to share my feelings.
I am willing to sit down with anybody who wants to sit at the table, whether it's the attorney, the supervisor, Timmy, or the entire planning commission, whatever is allowed by law by the Open Meetings Act. I have no ulterior motives other than good documentation.
Inconsistency between them.
And may, may I just mention something?
Yes, Andrea.
The, the benefit of making this a public hearing is that we get to hear from the public on the, on, I, I, and I'm not exactly familiar with the ins and outs of why this happened, but the benefit of just having this on the planning commission and having it publicly noticed is because you'll have opportunity for the members of the public to come in and express their concerns. And you're not bound by one public hearing. You're bound by at least one public hearing. There's no reason you can't have more than one public hearing on an issue if you care about it and want public input. Just putting that out there.
Especially if we make major changes in the process. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Is there a second?
Support, support by Member Engel. And we have a roll call vote.
Member Nordhuck?
Yes.
Member Richardson?
Yes.
Member Bruno?
No.
Member Moxley?
Yes.
Member Reese?
No.
Member Engel?
Yes.
One, two, three, four to two, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To see one more meeting out. We'll get it done.
I hope so.
If we're there yet.
If she hadn't have made that mistake, we'd, we'd look a little silly right now.
Will we, Article 8, like, planning commission bylaws? Uh, should we scratch that at this point?
No, I think we should talk about it.
Yeah, you have the opportunity to review tonight, continuing your preparation for adoption.
Okay. Can I hear any, uh, proposed changes? Well, remember Reese.
I, uh, I took it upon myself to look at the bylaws that we had approved, or I should say preliminarily approved as a planning commission in March. And I didn't really see any, uh, glaring differences, frankly. I mean, obviously the number. Um, but the thing that I, I do have some, oh, how should I put it? Reservations about is when we get down to, uh, when I, when I look at what was discussed in, in March, we went to a con, we talked about a conflict of interest or, or our code of conduct. The township board didn't want to adopt anything at the time, so we were asked to put it in our bylaws. So that was what we were working on, or waiting for, for legal counsel and staff to work on. Unfortunately, because we always seem to be shorthanded on staff, it, it got, you know, by the wayside and didn't happen in time. But we, uh, when I look at the new code of conduct, or, uh, conflict of interest statement that's in there, that they're talking about, it doesn't seem to address ex parte communications. And I was curious about, uh, our attorney's opinion on that because the, our old bylaws that we had previously been reviewing in March specifically mentioned ex parte communications. The planning commission has always had that document in place. And now it seems that the conflict of interest that we're taking that out of the bylaws to have it be a separate document that township board is working on, which is great. That's what we originally had asked for a year ago. Uh, they wouldn't do it then. But the, that doesn't, it seems to lack with that respect. And I'm curious what the, uh, legal opinion is on that. If, if we should just ignore ex parte communications, or if I'm just that uh, knowledgeable enough to be able to pick it out of the, uh, legal document.
Um, I'm not quite sure what you're asking. I, I'm assuming, and forgive me, I did not make these changes to the bylaws, but it's my understanding that the, um, the issue with respect to ex parte communications and addressing, um, the rules associated with that will be within the conflict of interest provisions that are being considered by the board. Um, again, I, I, I apologize, I did not make these changes, so I am not sure where that's going. I can talk to my colleagues and figure out what the reason was for removing that section from the bylaws, but I assume it's going to be addressed in a different document. And so we just didn't want to have any conflict between the bylaws and where ex parte communications are otherwise going to be regulated or governed.
Yeah, because the comment on the, on the packet tonight, the comment in the packet by whoever BK1 is, says, what is this, where is this, and why is it not just included here? So that's, that's, uh, I mean, that's what the, the document says that was sent to us. But, um, I did, the, the draft, that the, that the, for the conflict of interest, I didn't see anything in there about the communication part. And I guess I, if we're not going to have that in the bylaws, I'd like to make sure it's in, it's in the conflict of interest aspect. And I think it should be somewhere because what we don't want is to not mention it and have a situation where people are discussing things in a small group outside of the public, and then it doesn't get brought up here where it should be.
Sure, sure. I, yeah, I understand the, the concern, and I will take that back and, uh, clarify what the intent is there and make sure that we have those issues covered in, whether they be in the bylaws or within one of the ordinances, um, or in the, uh, code of conduct, so that, um, there are standards to follow with respect to ex parte communications.
Member Engel.
Well, we haven't seen any code of conduct yet, other than one that was floating around and, and that was not included in the six documents that we obtained here at the beginning of January. I, I don't know whether you believe one of those is necessary because they do talk about malfeasance, misfeasance, et cetera, in here. Um, but I think the ex parte piece is important. It was section, the old section 10 of the, the bylaws that we got, and it was crossed out with a comment. I note, um, maybe by way of guidance, Ada Township's, uh, current conflict of interest in their bylaws actually includes a reference to, uh, ex parte communications. You might want to use that as, uh, at least a rough model for inclusion here.
Open, the Open Meetings Act also addresses it, doesn't it?
I believe so.
Does it?
That was my thought.
Member Bruno.
I noticed in the, you're right, there's not a code of conduct. There is a conflict of interest township level that's being proposed.
Right.
But it was scratched from here, it's not included there, because I thought it's covered very thoroughly in the Open Meetings Act.
If, if it is, I'm good with that. I didn't realize it was in there.
That's my belief. I, I looked at so many documents today, I might, Leslie can probably.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Open Meetings Act does, you know, specify what can and can't be done with respect to communications amongst, uh, planning commissioners or other township officials outside the, um, uh, purview of a public meeting. Um, of course, the township could adopt additional rules over and above, uh, what is already prohibited or. The township could adopt additional rules over and above, uh, what is already prohibited or restricted within the Open Meetings Act. Um, but ex parte communications, generally speaking, is an issue that is governed under the OMA.
Okay. Member Bruno?
Um, I, I, I think it's already been proposed, I sit down with, with, with a lawyer and go through this, but I'll, I'll, I'll hit some of the highlights. So Article three, section three point one, terms of office, it says, except for members of the planning commission first appointed at MCL one, two, five, three, eight, fifteen. Um, that's from two thousand eight, is it not? That's sixteen years ago, so I, I just think that that's verbose and unnecessary because I don't think anybody on here has been serving since two thousand eight, would that be correct? It just seems like there's stuff in here that doesn't need to be, um. Then I'll get to, um, another one here, um. Well, the obvious I've raised, here it says we're going to have seven members in here, that's already covered by the, um, police power ordinance. And here's. Um. What section, um, that is section two point two members of planning, planning commission shall consist of seven members. I, I don't think that needs to be in here, I think that's, that's the board of trustees and the police power. Um, section, um.
Out of, not a bit.
If it's at the state or if it's at the board level, why would the planning, I mean, it's not like we can change that.
Correct, and then what if it conflicts? Um. But you, um, the section three point three, again, I think we're overstepping as, as a, as a planning commission. It talks about removal from office, it says to initiate, the planning commission may make a recommendation for removal, uh, according to the M P E A. The township board can do that directly, they don't need us to initiate anything, so I don't, I believe we're, we're trying to. To take on powers we don't have, um, and I can go on and on, but I just would love to sit down with someone.
I think that's, you. You have a member you want to move for reasons. We're not coming down to pick him out for you, you got to bring him to you.
It's a recommendation, that's all it is, Ryan, and I, I think that's.
I'm not swooping in on the members.
You have before.
By the way, we did go through that.
Legally, you can.
My, my.
Through that.
Okay.
We did.
My challenge.
And then here's another one, there's some sabbatical ones that are kind of interesting, um, well, there's some, some that are very interesting. Um. And this is where, this is where it's good to have discussions, sometimes I can sit down with a lawyer, but some of this, um, i- is kind of interesting. So under secretary, we have all communications petitions and reports addressed to the planning commission must be delivered and mailed to the secretary. It appears that our, our flow of communication is actually, everything is mailed and sent to the chair previously. All the documents, all the documents this last meeting that Chris apologized he didn't get to us. Well, he shouldn't have even been in the channel, so is this what we intend, and if so, why don't we follow it? There's another section, I've got to find some of this, um. The section before that, um, two point three B. The vice chairperson is authorized to serve as a chairperson, the chairperson is absent, I think we all agreed and said that at our last meeting. The next sentence is maybe what we intend, but it's not what was stated at the last meeting. If there's a vacancy in the office of the chairperson, the vice chairperson shall fill the vacancy for the unexpired term and the planning commission shall fill the vacancy of the office of the vice chairperson. We said at our last meeting that if the. Um, if there was a change, we would revote on the entire. Slate, and that's not what it says here, I don't care which way it is, but it was just interesting to me that.
We did say that.
We, we thought we operated differently than what this bylaws say. Um. Semantics maybe, but I believe our intent again is missing two point three, it's not even a section, it's before A. Each term of office is one year with eligibility for reelection for no more than two consecutive. So I read that is you're eligible to be reelected for two consecutive, for two more consecutive terms. So it's summation of three. We said there's only two, so you're going to be reelected for one more term. That's what it should be. Or.
Or not.
Or not, right, what's the intent? I can go on and on, but I just found it interesting that today I sat down and red used the fine tooth comb and the amount of inconsistencies within the document itself, as well as the rules of engagement we thought we're operating under. Don't line up with this. So my question is, even if I sit down with a lawyer, we should be clear on what our intent and what we want it to be. I haven't been here long enough, I just know what we said last week conflicts with a lot of this.
So I think what you can do with the attorney is you can talk to the attorney about best practices. And I think, and you come back and say, here are the four issues, guys, girls. Um, and how do you want to, how do you want to roll on this? And then you, we make a decision, and I don't see that as a. Herculean task.
Okay. Um. And then I guess, um, I'll, I'll, I'll close with one last one, I, I, uh. I guess was frankly disappointed, but may, maybe it's back to the, so there's not conflict. I was surprised by Article four, to me, the meat, what I was really looking forward to, being one of the most junior. Is what are our responsibilities? And. The planning commission must perform all the actions required by law. Wow. That was enlightening for me. Maybe that's purposeful, but could we say, for example?
May I speak a little bit to your point?
Yeah.
We actually had this discussion as a department that we want to quickly get some training. Um, for the planning commission, so.
Good.
It will help so that you, you will get Michigan Association of Planning or.
But it would be.
U M extension.
But it would be nice if we tap, we, we have a vacancy or maybe we don't, but. Maybe we have turnover, whatever.
Yep.
When you tap someone on the shoulder and you say, we'd like to be a planning commission, and they pull up the bylaws, they have some concept of what we're supposed to do? Like, is there any reason we couldn't say? We'll review special use permits, we'll. Create a end of year report, we'll review the capital, um, expenditure.
Improving plan.
Saying that we keep doing that. There's a long list of things it seems we do and we don't recover any of them. And I asked two people today. As to why we review. Those two items, the, um, PUDs and the.
Special use permit.
Storage bags. In both were unclear as to why we do it, so. Maybe this is a spot where we address that.
But we do it now because in chapter twenty-three it says.
Zoning activities, that would be zoning activities. Okay, so. Including but not limited to zoning activities, maybe that's how we put in there, but that would be nice.
And it's probably in the new, and I don't know, but it's probably in the new police powers ordinance that. If we look at it, we probably see that, at least to some extent.
That's what we talked about earlier.
That is a proposed one?
Whole conversation we had earlier in the hour ago.
Other than the, I believe, zoning administrator, there is no mention of zoning in the new police power act or in the bylaws.
I think it'd be good if they spelled out exactly what you can expect when you come in as a planning commission member.
It would be nice.
Here's your duties. And, yeah. Yes, member Reese.
So to that point. I know when I became a planning commissioner, I was given a large packet of information, a binder, maps, I don't know, it was a stack of stuff this tall. And it seems like we've fallen out of that. Out of, it, it looks like Timmy received that information too, and it seems like we've fallen out of that pattern. But, uh, director, uh, plant, or, uh. Community development director Peterson gave, gave that information. And I think maybe since then we've fallen away from that because I know someone else that sat up here that isn't here now. Uh, didn't receive the same information that I had received, but I get a lot of information and a lot of training opportunities thrown out there a couple times a year. Went through, through, through the, the training you mentioned and, uh. You know, sometimes I, uh, I had it thrown back on my face when I brought things up here, suggestions, but at least I, uh, I knew I was on the right side of the, right side of the topic. Um. With respect to these bylaws, there's one other thing that I wanted to question. Our previous planning director, uh, just one previous planning director, uh, in section three point two had recommended the sentence. Uh, be added at the end of that, says, should the unexpired term be two years or longer, it shall be considered as a full term. And I noticed that's not in the current, uh, provisions in front of us today. But it is in the ones that we had prior, is there any reason why we? Would not want to, because I know that question has come up before, I think I served six. Or eight months of, of somebody's term, uh, when I came on. And does that constitute a full term because it was only six months and a term is three years? Or, you know, and so I think, uh, Brian wanted that in there for clarification, and I don't know if we want to have it in there still or if we want it removed, but I know it's just not in the. Current one.
Well, I think it's ours to. To control, I don't see objection, I, I love clarity and it seems like it adds clarity and not, not conflict, I would be supportive of it, that's something you'd like for me to.
Bring up.
Bring up when I, apparently when I meet with a lawyer.
I, I think, yeah, it's, like I said, it's the last sentence of three point two and the bylaws that we had. Agreed to in March of twenty twenty-three.
Similarly, looking at the city of Grand Rapids and, and their bylaws, they actually have a section under meetings called meeting format. Again, we didn't put that meat in there, it's interesting, it's on the bottom of every agenda we have, we have. First thing we do is staff presentation, then we do project presentation, then we do public hearings, then we do commission discussion.
Police powers ordinance.
Why wouldn't we have that in our bylaws, our standard public hearing format?
I have a memory that that was, I have a memory that that was actually plugged into, I was surprised to see it plugged into the police powers ordinance. Is that right, Leslie?
What, I'm sorry, which provision are you referring to that was put in the police power ordinance?
That in the police power ordinance that Mike shared, that you actually have the, the format of the meeting, proposed meeting in that ordinance.
I did recall seeing that, yes, and again, that shouldn't be in there.
And, and the question is, why is that there if it is?
I would have to, uh, I apologize, I'd have to go back and take a look at that, it's not in the PC packet, I don't have it in front of me right now, but. Um, again, that's the type of thing that, you know, it could be in the ordinance or it could be in the bylaws. Um, as long as it's not in conflict, um, you know, between the two documents.
Wouldn't you want that in the, wouldn't you want that in the bylaws to give the commission just that, that much flexibility in how we run our meetings?
I don't see, I don't have a concern with that, no.
Yeah.
Are you aware of any conflicts? Timmy, with that?
I'm, I'm.
No? Okay.
You want to propose we add that? I'll make note to.
Plug those into the bylaws and take them out of the.
Yeah.
Police powers ordinance.
I'm just want to make sure that's one you want to know.
And then, and then one last one, um. And I, I think you addressed this, Leslie, but it wasn't overly clear to me, um, I think you, I think you said that they can set a minimum and maximum, but. Again, um, leveraging, um, what member Engel just said, the police power ordinance specifies. Our frequency of meetings in it expressly states in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act that the planning commission shall establish that. So is that something else we can make sure stays in the bylaws and gets removed from the police power ordinance? I know we don't have any control over it, but it does appear that the. State has control over it and they've expressly stated that's something that the.
Yeah, that's something the board would have to, to take up when considering the police power ordinance.
Okay.
We just did our schedule for the year, scheduling our meetings.
Uh, question for Leslie, uh, if, uh, member Bruno, uh. Converses with you on some of these changes, uh, how would you like to do that?
Um, I would have to talk with, um, Mike Homier, uh, obviously he's the lead township attorney, um, and I wasn't part of drafting these particular documents, so. Um, it might make sense to have him involved and, um, you know. I can coordinate with him as to who it would be most appropriate for, uh, member Bruno to speak with on these concerns.
Okay. Okay. All right, uh, member Engel.
Uh, a- and this is really probably addressed to Timmy, Ralph and Scott. Three point three, um. The, the recommendation for removal of a planning commission member for misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance. I have s- some memory in the distant past that there was some animated discussion about how we define those and what type of conduct meets that. I- is that something that? We ought to drill down on at all or? Um. Do we just sort of let that hang out there because it's really up to the board to make that finding and, and. And we don't make that finding, we just make a recommendation, what, Leslie, what, what would you say about that?
I would agree, it's ob- obviously up to the board to make decisions with respect to removal of a member based on those three. Um, standards, so I would not put in the bylaws specific co, um. Conduct that would be constitute misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance. In fact, and I don't think I've ever seen those terms be specified within a set of bylaws because it is. Within the purview of the board to, um, you know, remove members based on those standards.
So we raise that, we raise the issue based on certain conduct, we make a recommendation, the board essentially reviews it and de novo and makes up their, makes up their mind.
Member Bruno? Leslie, can I ask Joe's question in, in, in a slightly different twist? Um, why would we have this? In here at all, other than maybe removal from office, the township board, uh, uh, how about, um, tiny commission members may be removed in accordance with the M P E A. I mean, this paragraph is almost cut and paste for the M P A. And what we run a risk of is when they change that, we're, we're not in accordance with it. I just, I don't understand the amount of redundancy, if this paragraph is exactly in the M P E A, why do we feel the need to duplicate it?
Okay.
Well, one of the reasons that we put provisions in the bylaws is because, um, you know, not every member of the planning commission is going to go track down the planning enabling act and read it word for word to determine what their powers and duties are and what the scope is. So having some of that information in the bylaws that is more readily available and reviewed by the planning commissioners. Um, puts them, you know, g- gives you the information you need to know with respect to how you're governed. Um, you know, if you, you want, if the planning commission wanted to put in their bylaws just a cross reference to the planning enabling act and say. Um, you know, planning commissioners may be removed, uh, from office as specified in the planning enabling act, that would be fine as well. Um, but oftentimes, like I said, we copy and paste directly from the statute so that. Um, you know, i- i- it's an easier, the bylaws are much easier to review and access than they, than the statutes are for most planning commission members and most, um. Township officials, they prefer to have, you know, um, have the, the information more easily accessible than to sift through long statutes. With respect to what their.
Are we allowed to, or not, we?
Member Reese.
I was just going to say, I, I liked her response there, Leslie, I like that because I do think it's important for certain things to be in the bylaws for a person who comes in. That is the one thing you should read, right, when you join any kind of committee, the first thing you should do is learn the bylaws. And that gives you an understanding of where to look for more information and how things are to be run. And so I think it's important for us to touch on some of this stuff, even if a few of them have those redundancies, I think, Ryan, that you're concerned with. I think there's a few of them though, where, there's a few things though where a little redundancy isn't, isn't, uh, awful. Obviously, we don't want to be too redundant because we have a tendency to lose track of things, particularly of, of late, it would appear, but. Um, I mean, as a township, not necessarily just us, but I, I think, I think that's, it's good to touch on some of this.
Bruno? Is there an opportunity for a happy medium, like, so keep that in, remove from office, like what, I don't want to use your words, Leslie, because I don't know what they were, but in accordance with whatever. Can we for convenience create, create a hyperlink for an onboarding member that they can just click on and it takes them to that if they want to read the specifics of it? Is that allowed? So we make a specific reference, so they know they can be removed and they click on a link and it takes them to the, to the exact wording.
That's great unless they printed a PDF which doesn't give you a hyperlink. I mean, I mean, it's a document that stands alone by itself and, and it'd be nice to have this if you're up in your hunting cabin, Ryan, and you pull out a copy and you want to review them.
Yeah, no, I, I get you and I'm, I'm trying not to be, you know, just stubborn, but, and that the same thing is, do we mention, we go back to the beginning, do we say in here that there's seven members? Because we don't expect them to go out and read the police power ordinance? What, where, it's a fine line, where do you redraw, where do you draw the line on duplicativeness and redundancy?
Yeah, yeah.
I will say this, this is an important paragraph because we actually went through this very issue, removal from office. Of a planning commissioner. About, what, three years ago now?
Who probably provided more comment and time on these bylaws than the average person.
People don't have.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on the bylaws?
I, I will do one more. I've pointed out what we've done inconsistently from last week. But one we all thought was inconsistent and it was actually just fine. Section five point five. F, no, five point five G. Um. Nope, what was that? No, I just lost, I scrolled too far. Uh, oh, I just had it. I missed it, anyway. I missed it. Anyway, there's a section here that says that the chairperson at his discretion can reorder the agenda.
Where are you looking?
Um.
He put that in there.
I, I had it. It was on my screen. I hit the scroll wheel. It's in there if you want me to find it exactly, um.
I do. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. It's, it's all.
I had it on my screen. It reminded me, um. Uh, I can find it. I'll send it to people afterwards if it's, I don't think it's.
It's not a big deal. It's, it's funny. I think it's cute.
Okay, oh, right here. Five point four. The agenda may be supplemented, reordered by the planning mission during a meeting provided the same does not violate any applicable law. Five point four of.
I see it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Of Article Five meetings. So we were good.
Well, then I would have reordered the agenda earlier and we would have saved an hour because now I feel confident enough to move forward with a public hearing. But when we set the date, I didn't.
Look at that.
We learned.
Okay.
So that's, that's good. That's good.
At, at the risk.
Member Ringel.
At the risk of prolonging this, Leslie. Um, we've had a couple of occasions in the last year where members have abstained from voting.
You're not allowed to do that.
And my reading of the bylaws is you cannot, essentially, you can't do that without the permission of the remainder of the planning commission as spelled out in the bylaws. And I wondered if you could explain. What the rationale is behind that for us.
Well, I mean, obviously, if members routinely, um, you know. Decide not to make a decision or vote on an issue, that can create an issue with respect to quorum. Um, so typically that is an issue when we deal with conflicts of interest that a member will recuse themselves. Um, you know, and, and, and the process for. Figuring out a conflict is set forth usually in your bylaws. Um, but I, again, I, I would have to. Look into this a little bit further. I didn't make these changes to the, um, bylaws, so I'm not. Quite sure what the rationale was behind that. Um.
It, it, it applies in.
Abstain for conflict of interest, right?
Right. You can abstain for conflict, but you can't abstain because you.
Just for preference.
Because you don't want to vote. And that's happened several times up here where people have abstained from the vote and that alters the vote significantly.
Right.
Especially when we're short on people.
And in some instances, if, if that's done routinely, again, it could be an issue of forum or it could constitute not, nonfeasance of office. Because you're not acting upon, you know, you're not, you're not. It, you know, en- engaging in your statutory duties as a planning commissioner to make decisions. I mean, that's part of your job is to sometimes make ones that are difficult. Um, and if we have members, uh, routinely, um, fail to vote on issues, then again, that could. Be, you know, you're not acting upon your roles and responsibilities when you took off oath and oath of, an oath of office to. Um, make these tough decisions. So that happens a lot in, um, on. In the context of ZBAs as well, not obviously specifically with this township, but I've seen it before in other clients where. Members of the ZBA don't want to make decisions and you say, well, unless you have a conflict of interest, unfortunately, you gotta vote on this, this issue as part of your job as a. Member of this body, so.
Thank you.
And, and for the record, that's exactly, it's back in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. It covers that exactly.
But it should still be in the bylaws.
Clearly.
So there can be, so they can be easily accessed.
Yeah, you can't be chicken, not vote.
Right, because people are dodging their responsibilities by not, not voting.
Which is, you know, your duties on the planning.
And I think that's a, a great example of why it should be in the bylaws because it's clear. That everybody needs to have an understanding of that and that's the easiest document for any of us to access to find that. To find it in the state statute is, is not, not easy, especially when the internet doesn't work. It's not like I can look it up on my screen during the meeting and answer the question.
You gotta let that go, Scott. It's not gonna happen. Okay.
Okay, you can access that, Scott. You're not gonna get to this because this is on a website as well unless you carry it with you like your Bible or something.
In order to move this forward and get out of here before eleven, uh, I'd like to, uh, ask that somebody make a motion. To have member Bruno communicate with, uh, uh, Mike Homier, uh, about his. Recommendations on the bylaws.
Do we want to have a motion or do we just want to have? Uh, mi- member Bruno communicate with Attorney Homier and then when they come back, we can make a motion to, to, uh. To, to, you know, we'll review the document and maybe make a motion to approve that document, but right now I think we're just asking him. To go and, and work on it on our behalf, right?
I think.
It's money. We have, do we have?
Yeah, can we, can staff speak to that too?
Well, the manager or the supervisor have to, has to approve that.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you would, if you would formally. Forward your concerns via email to staff, then staff can help facilitate the meeting with legal counsel.
I formally enter into the staff, everything that I've stated today. I'm not gonna do more. I'm not gonna. Go through it with staff and then go through it with a lawyer as well.
No, I mean.
I don't have that kind of time. Sorry. Unless you want me to give an estimate for my time as well. It's just, I'm not, the whole point is I'm doing redundancy here. I, if what I've said is not enough, then, then, then I, I will. Uh, reframe my offer to me with a lawyer.
I, I think.
Staff can sit there and.
Can we?
Outside me and.
Can we pick it up from the meeting minutes and communicate with the attorney?
I was thinking an email would probably be adequate.
That's all I was.
Through, through staff, if you, if you summarized your, your points, I know this is a challenge sometimes, Ryan, but. Yeah, fewer pages is better than more.
I can put together and hereby request time of the township. Legal counsel to address the issues and then some that were raised at the blank meeting today. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, or you could just.
A simple email.
And I'll even include if anybody sitting up here, I, I, I'm somewhat hesitant to be like the, the, the sole person doing this. Scott had one he wanted included. Be sure and send that the. If you're serving more than two years, send that to me. So I'll make sure we address that. If anybody can also send to me, because I want to represent the group.
Manager Smith is attending and would like to speak.
One, one, just one second, um. I hear that we want to make sure that we, even though it's redundant, we want to have the malfeasance, nonfeasance. I made a mental note of that. We want to have, what was yours, Joe? They also want to be in there, even if it's redundant?
The male fees is not fees in there. It's already in there.
It's already, okay, so I had it in my to scratch. Is there anything else that? Do you feel okay that if I ask the lawyer to scratch any redundancies? That he thinks are standard practicing, standard operating procedure or best practices? Are you okay with that? Is there any specifically that you want redundant? I hear you definitely want redundant, malfeasance, nonfeasance. Is there anything else like that? Or you defer to me just telling him, let's remove as much redundancy as we can?
Well, we have the ex parte issue to figure out here too, but I think we've agreed that that's right, that's right at M P A.
I'll forget. Can you send me those three and I'll include that in the email?
You'll consolidate them into one.
I think I have two of them. What was the third?
See, I've already forgot.
The term, the ex parte.
And then. Um, term, the extra, those aren't redundancies. Those are.
Is Jade off mute? Jade, you can speak.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. All right, um, I, I just wanted to kind of back up what, um, Madison was just saying in regards to setting up a meeting with the attorney. I don't think we need a detailed email, but I think what we have to do is in respect for the budget and making sure that everything is appropriately scheduled. Um, as we as staff are overseeing the budget and the contractors and the consultants. We just need that request and it needs to just filter through us. Um, it's not trying to micromanage or anything, but we do need to make sure that we are managing. Our consultants. So I don't need a detailed email. I think that what you've done tonight is fine. And I think Madison was just looking out for the best interest of what the direction that was given to all of the staff and the directors by myself. Um, as being the new, uh, manager to the township. Um, I have some other comments, but I'll wait until you guys wrap up this bylaw section, um, in regards to, I had my hand up earlier in regards to the ordinance changes. But I will hold off on those for a couple of minutes until you guys wrap up the bylaw section.
I hope we're done in a couple of minutes.
Should, should the, uh.
I think if we look at the bylaws, I think in somewhere that states, again, if my memory is not failing, that, that comes to the chair. So I think the chair. Should make the recommendation on spending funds and if you could, I can help you with that.
Yeah.
I think it should come from you.
I'd like to review it before it goes out. Uh, shall we send it to Madison or to Andrea?
Both.
Yes, you can send it to both, please.
Okay, then you can make your comments and changes and so on. So you sent it to me. I sent it to those two folks. Okay. And if anybody else.
Thank you.
Has any other comments to get to, Ryan. Thank you for putting that together, Ryan. I appreciate it. Okay. Any further discussion about Article Eight bylaws? Article nine, acknowledged visitors or those wishing to speak. Do we have anybody else online? Uh, Jade, any other comments?
Um, yes, I do, and I, and I hate to take the meeting backwards and I know I, I'm trying to respect everybody's time, but I just wanted to address a few things. That were brought up during the conversation in regards to the ordinance changes. And I think one, one of the comments was actually said that this was a recommendation of the new ma- uh, manager and I just want to. Clarify that it's been a short four months that I've been on board. Um, that's not actually an accurate statement. Um, there were a litany of items that were, that I inherited and this is one of them had already been started to be worked on. So expediting that process with the township attorney was. Something on my to-do list. So moving this forward definitely was not a recommendation by myself, but I will clarify. That I may have said, I thought it was interesting that the way the ordinance was presented in Cascade Township. I've never seen the ordinance. The way that i- in the zoning as it is today. Um, I've been at three other communities and I've never seen a planning commission. Um, that's been more than seven. So did I confer with what was being proposed? Sure. Um, I've managed communities from six thousand to a hundred thousand and, um, the size of the planning commission has been consistent on all three communities. So I just wanted to kind of clarify for the record that it wasn't actually a recommendation of mine, although I do concur with it. And, um, that this. This action or work that needed to get done was pu- was handed to me, um, to, to kind of complete. Um, along with a litany of other items that were inherited and most of all, I think it was mentioned earlier. That we don't like inconsistency or conflicting information. And I can tell you that ninety-five percent of what I've touched so far in regards to processes or policies have been inconsistent or have had conflicting. Um, items between documents or between policies and a lot of these are operational, they're internal. So we are clarifying and there's a lot of work that's going on to, um, to correct these inconsistencies. So as we come up with more, if you see them, I encourage you to bring them to my attention or Andrea's attention or Madison's attention so that we can get them. Corrected and move forward so we can actually comply with all the statutes and make sure that all of our policies and procedures are consistent. Um, and then I just wanted to address also, I think, um, one of the commissioners made a comment that we don't have a planning director. Um, I did send out an email on Thursday and I introduced Andrew Hendrick, who is the new community planning and development director. This is the planning director. Her duties, and if you looked at the job description that was posted, her duties are exactly that of the previous planning director plus more. So this, who you see there in front of you tonight, Andrea, is more than capable of taking on this role. And she is the planning director moving forward. Um, just one other quick thing, there was some discussion on the comm- um, onboarding and commissions, um, boards and commissions. Education, kind of a reference tool. I can tell you that what I'm looking at implementing across the entire organization is for all boards and commissions to have a consistent onboarding. Process that would, it would be unique for each commissioner board. But the roles and responsibilities of each commission will be outlined in that. Along with some onboarding meetings and training that's gonna co-along with that for, for everybody. So it's gonna be, again, it'll be different for. The planning commission than it would be for Parks and Rec, than it will be for the DDA. But as far as the process that we go through as staff, that's gonna be something that is done and I'll be, I'm interested to hear from, um, Commissioner Risi. And I believe, um, trustee Nordic, that you guys had been a part of this before, so I'll be interested to see what that consisted of prior to, um. To us discussing this because I've not seen anything at Township Hall that, that showed there was any sort of onboarding process. Um, and then other than that, that's, that's, I kind of consolidated all my comments, um, but I, I, like I said, I wanted to address these. I, I had my hand up earlier during the actual agenda item. It just wasn't seen. So, but I'm more than happy to clarify anything that I just said if there's any questions.
Member Bruno. I, I, I hate to venture in this because I've, I just kind of said I didn't care. I'm trying to stay out of the, whether it's nine or seven, but. But I'm also trying to understand both sides. So when you mentioned, I think you said you, you've worked in three communities from three thousand to a hundred thousand? Is that approximately correct?
Six thousand to a hundred thousand, yes.
Six thousand, a hundred thousand. With, with, with the concept, and hopefully one of the two sides will, will. Take something from this. So with that concept of always having the same size commission, isn't. Again, reading the M P E A today, it sounds like the whole concept behind a planning commission is to have a cross section of the community. And as your community grows, isn't it harder to, if you have the same size regardless of size of community, to get a farmer, an engineer, a accountant, uh. Uh, you know, self-employed, a homemaker. Um, so I was just kind of surprised that it's constant for a. Varying size population.
Um, I, I. You know, I've never really given that too much thought, but I would think that a seven-person cross-section of the community would be pretty consistent among all communities. So you could find. Um, nine to five white collar employees, you could find blue collar factory employees, you could find the homemakers, this. Um, I, senior citizens, I, architects, by, if you wanted to look by what their profession was, I think you could. Easily make the argument that you could find that cross-section in any community. Um, but again. I'm gonna go back and say that this is just something that I've experienced. It wasn't my recommendation, um. But I, I just know the consistency that I've seen in the past and I think that if you work hard enough, you can find the, the consistent cross-section. Um, of the community even with seven.
Very fair. Th- thank you for answering that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Jade. Uh, member Risi.
Jade, I just wanted to touch on a point. You brought up the chapter twenty, our essential governing ordinance, if you will, uh, chapter twenty-three. And I, I also, uh, it was a while back, but I looked and we are, I think there's only one other community in Kent County. Where, uh, our, our bylaws, if you will, foul, fall under a portion of the zoning ordinance. It's very, um, very rare. And so I, I, we're, we're, we're going in the right direction here. So I appreciate hearing his, his perspective on this though. That is, that is very helpful. Thank you for making the comments.
Any other, uh, visitors online? Okay. Uh, moving on to Article Ten, any other business? I'd like to make a few comments if I may. Uh, we have received the updated master plan from McKenna. Uh, Danielle Bouchard, uh, I've been reading through it. It's very well done. It's picked. I've found it, I was kind of focused on the farmland preservation comments. I found that she's really updated it. Quite nicely in that area. It was nice to see. They did ask that we respond by Thursday, as I, as I recall. Madison. Get, get your comments back to Danielle by that time. And she'll, uh, get it updated with your comments. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is that as, uh, chair, I, uh, plan on attending future Board of Trustees meetings, uh. Alternating Wednesday nights, uh, as a channel of communication to listen to what they have to say and if they have questions for me. I, I would welcome those. So I want more communication between, uh, the chair of this commission and the Board of Justices. The other comment is that, uh. As chair of the, uh, planning commission, I would. Welcome regular meetings with, uh, Andrea and welcome aboard Andrea. When you're putting together an agenda for the meetings, I'm happy to come over, review those and make sure we've got everything included. And I'll do the same thing with the, uh, with Madison on the zoning board of appeals and so, chair of that too. Okay. Any other business? Member Risi.
I was just gonna say that generally staff would email the chair the agenda. At the beginning of the week. You guys would. You guys would discuss it over email and draft form. And then staff would, and then staff would distribute it to everyone. So you don't have to, to drive to the office.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, the other reason I suggest that is that I may have to sign documents.
Yeah.
Approved documents and every sheet, you know, type of thing. And that's what I heard from Chris. He says, you better plan on meeting with them periodically to, uh, sign documents. So I'm ready for it and as a retiree, I have the time to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Article Eleven, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by member Engel, supported by member Reese. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six, nothing. We stand adjourned at.
Eight fifty-one.